... board agenda. We have, this evening, we have seven items as a lengthy agenda, so I'd like to just, we move through this best we can. Catherine, you want to call and roll to start, I guess?
Sure. Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Arena?
Here.
Mr. Kashani?
Here.
Mr. Cosell?
Here.
Mr. Malta?
Here.
Mr. Mixel?
Here.
Mr. Jordina?
Here.
Mr. Artuso?
Here.
Mr. Sacran?
Here.
Okay. We have to say that everyone's here, everyone's in the room even, that's, do we have to say the pledge of allegiance?
Yeah, we should. You see that? That's all it took for me to lose it. Would you join, please? Pledge allegiance?
To the republic, for which we stand, one nation, united out, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for relating, Ken. Question a lot here. And, again, we have a pretty lengthy agenda.
Want me to read the tables, Mary?
Why don't you go through, start with that Landon Woods, that is the one table item we have.
Very good. Landon Woods Cluster Development located at 687 Howard World Appicent in site land development is requesting preliminary final site plan and subdivision approval to subdivide a 4.8 acre parcel into eight single-family lots, including one existing residential located in our three single-family residential district under Dakota Town Webster.
Good evening. Martin and Beth from BME Associates requesting preliminary and final approval for Beverly Forest subdivision formerly called Landon Woods. There was a little change in the name, we can discuss later. Just for a recap, two weeks ago at your meeting, Peter Vars from our office reviewed the revised conventional layout with your board to be sure that we have a clear direction for final cluster plans preparation. And we got it from you at that evening. So you remember, we eliminated one lot, reducing the proposed eight new lots to seven. You can see on the revised plans how our client spread the width of the eliminated lot between the remaining seven. Lot number two is now wider, which allowed to move proposed house further away from the creek, which was your board's suggestion. Since the last meeting, BME resubmitted the revised plans for your review and also addressed town staff's request to provide data from our field wetland investigation. Per U.S. Army Corps of Engineers regulations, federal wetlands has to have all three following factors present. Number one, hydroic soils; number two, wetland hydrology; and number three, hydrophytic wetland vegetation. We provided a summary of results of soil testing, hydrology, and vegetation findings. The results determined that these are, that there are no federal wetlands present on the site, which confirms why there are no wetlands shown on state freshwater wetland map as well as on nationwide federal wetland map. The revised plans show now only seven lots with lot width from 90 to 105 feet and lot sizes from 22,130 square feet up to 37,560 square feet, so you can notice that it's pretty close to the R3, you know, standard lot sizing. We also addressed all agency and other staff comments, including providing 26-foot wide pavement for fire trucks. We made various easement adjustments, there are town comments, and got a new road name approved by 911. The new road name is Timberland Court, and the approved subdivision name is Beverly Forest, as I mentioned earlier. With that, I would like to ask the board if you have any questions.
Okay, thanks. And your drawing, Martin, you know, that new pond is located now, correct?
New pond.
Right there, okay.
It's located at the same location-
Yeah.
-as it where it was with eight lots.
Okay, now, access to that is, where's the easement going through, is it to the, to the west of it?
The easement.
Oh, take the microphone there, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
The access to the pond is located between the two lots and comes towards the-
Spillway.
Okay, between lot three and four?
That'll be true. Five and six, that's correct. Between five and six.
That's what it looked like to me, so.
Yes.
Okay, so from five to six, that brings you to the west end of the pond, so there is access to it.
So there is access on the other side of the pond to approximately center of the pond where the outlet structure is, so there's an access to maintain that outlet structure.
Okay. All right, and for the board, everyone's seen, we've gotten several requests and concerns about being wetlands in there and letter upon letter in regard to it. And before anybody calls in, just for the record, this gentleman is certified to do the testing for wetland delineations. He's been in this for 28 years, he's respected by the DEC, Army Corps of Engineers, and so forth. So I think we've reached the point where we are in agreement to say what he has observed is accurate and adequate. So as far as wetlands, I don't want to make this a big night topic. Next step, I know there's concern about the road. There were concerns about the road and the change of plans. The plans that were shown were the standard conventional type of a development, you know, with the road in the center, to show what could be developed there under a standard R3 development. Your choice was to come in with a cluster, you've reduced the size, you've taken a lot out of there actually, and I'm looking at this drawing, and I'm looking at the lots to the north, one, two, three, four, five, six. Six existing home lots are now equal to just five of the new development. So these lots are much larger, adequate, they meet all the zoning ordinance, and I see no issues with this. This thing has been reviewed by town staff, it's been reviewed by highway department, water, Joe Herbst has gone over there with town staff to review it all and gone over it. You personally have walked the site again to just double check to say that there are no wetlands on the site.
Yep.
Some of the comments are in error, several of them are in error, they're opinions, not factual. This is kind of time-consuming for Josh and others at the town to have to deal with this kind of stuff, but kind of, you were teasing me a little bit, but that's the way it goes.
Sure.
So anyways, along with that, anybody have any comments on the project itself?
Tony, there's been several comments about, someone says that you can't have a private road, it's not in the Western Code, just-
That is, that is false, it is in the code. If somebody took the time to look under definitions, in definitions, it says a road. A road is a regular road, a town dedicated road, or private.
Okay.
It's called a private drive. We call it a private drive, it's a private road. So yes, it is in there, contrary to what people say, that's what I'm saying, comments are made that-
And we have several of them here in town.
A lot of them, yes.
One of them is, the line map is Pipeline Drive, which is right off of Schlegel.
I mean, this is not unusual. No, not at all, by any means. The road actually, being a private drive going in here, this project, my understanding is it's under a homeowners association, an HOA, that will be maintaining the water, the detention area, all the common area, and the roadway going in. So that's all maintained under a homeowners association. Each person in there pays however they want to pay, monthly or however you set it up, a due to pay for all the work that needs to be done in there. And generally, I guess somebody heads up chairman or someone up there, president of the board, whatever, and they'll, they dictate how the system runs. So that being said, we've looked at this over and over, so on lot number, lot number eight, that's shoved back, obviously, that's for your turnaround, for delivery trucks and so on and so forth, the plows and-
And fire trucks.
Okay, and then on the north side, there's a concern, you know, again, the concern was that the road showed on line that it was in the middle and now it's changing. No, it isn't changing. That was just what was shown, to show what could go there under a conventional development. This is the one they're proposing to do, same number of houses, it's just different and everything conforms, there's no variance or anything required. Now, it looks like on the north side of that road, now, oh, before I forget too, is that road 26-foot wide, whatever it was required?
Yes, the total is 26 feet.
Okay, so you're meeting the requirements?
We met the request by your fire marshal.
Okay, great, so we got that. You have 15 feet to the north side, was there any, you know, between the road and the back of those, to me, I think this actually is better, because these people don't have a house in their backyard, you know, they're looking at.
The houses will be over 500 feet away from the houses to the north.
There you go. Now, what, is there anything going in there, are you putting any buffering in there? I know at one point somebody asked about any buffering in there, in that 15-foot space on the north side of the road?
No, we are putting in a ditch, which was requested by your staff, to actually help the neighbors to the north to perhaps collect their drainage if they decide to connect their depressions or whenever, wherever they have issues with water to that, so. And our client agreed to do that, so.
So collects in a swale along there, and that swale ultimately goes into the detention pan there, to the south?
The swell goes along the road, it actually bypasses to the creek.
Oh, straight up going east?
Yes.
Okay, got it, all right. Okay. Yeah, I've been sleeping this thing, basically. Anybody, any concerns or issue, Derek, anybody, whatever?
Just one clarification, it says eight lots, it's not seven?
So it is seven lots, one existing?
Total is eight.
Okay, that's with the existing one, the old one, okay. But seven new units.
That's correct.
Originally, it showed nine, and-
Originally, it was one existing plus eight new, total of nine, yes.
Okay. Most of the detail is engineering detail on it, and that's been all resolved, you guys have been working with town staff on that? Anybody, Derek, any concerns? Dave?
No, we're all sitting down.
Good. All right, well, again, this is a public hearing, and they're in here for preliminary and final. We have reviewed this several times. I know there are some people that have concerns, we do have letters, and you know what, let's open it then, you want to do that, should we open?
Yeah.
Phone, we'll open it. Okay, so if anyone wishes to call in regarding to this, it's 872-7011.
Quick question? Oh, go ahead. Oh, wait.
Hi, this is Nicole Fornos.
Hi, Nicole.
Hi. Could I come in?
Sure, sure, go ahead, Nicole.
Okay, so, again, there's a big lag we're watching on, through our computer, so-
Okay.
-I'm really not able to hear the response unless it's directly through the phone, so if I could pass on to the BME engineer, I'm wondering if you could just please put him on the phone, so that I could hear, last time I missed his entire explanation.
Well, I can't put him on the phone, but go ahead, explain what your question is.
Okay, so, the letter that was forwarded to me on June 11th from BME said that a wetland delineation was completed. My question is, was a wetland delineation report completed?
Okay, hold on, let me, we'll get an answer from him, and I'll get back to you on it. Was there a wetland delineation reported?
The wetland investigation was completed, there was no reason to do wetland delineation report because there were no wetlands found on the property. Wetland investigation, including soil testing, hydrology, and vegetation, was provided to the town.
Okay, so what he's saying is, everything was done according to the requirements, and all that information was passed to the town, and the outcome basically was that there was no sign of any wetland vegetation on the site.
So I understand that that is what is being reported. My ongoing question is, I would like to see the report, which I hope that everyone on the board received the documents that I sent out through email and to neighbors, which is from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers.
Yes.
And on the second page of this document, it says, "After a wetland and water delineation has been completed, a delineation report should be submitted to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for review and verification." Last week, on June 10th, I spoke with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and they have not received anything from BME on this project. This document, the guidance from the Army Corps, goes on to say, on the third page, "The delineation should be verified by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers prior to finalizing any project design for the site, to ensure that no further modifications of project plans would be needed to comply with the guidelines." So the issue here is that while BME has done a wetland study of the property, no one has seen that study, so we're taking their word for it, which I think that report should be public information, and I have from, and written documentation from the Army Corps that they had yet to receive this. So if Army Corps receives this permit application or whatever they're going to receive from BME, and they see the site plan, and they say, "We want that house to be 100 feet away from that stream," then that entire site plan needs to be redone. So the whole point is about the order of these things being done according to the regulations, and I don't really appreciate being dismissed for asking you to do dodem.
I'll have, I'll have the engineer come right up here, because you're in a 20-second delay, I'll let him speak to you right here at the phone.
So, again, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, they do not require wetland delineation reports for properties which do not have wetlands on. We do that for properties we find wetlands on, we submit those to the Corps, and we get those delineations approved. There is no reason for that in this case. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers just requires that the owner's engineer uses a qualified wetland delineators to check the site for presence of the wetlands. In the case, only in the case there are wetlands found on the property, wetland delineation report is prepared and submitted to the Corps.
So, I have two comments on that, the first being that you have said that the three indicators, hydrology, wetland vegetation, and soils, none of those conditions are present. The soil maps show the majority of the soils are well-drained, there are areas on the project site that have poorly drained soils, and those should be investigated.
Well, hold on, Nicole, hold on, we can't go on all night long with this. This gentleman has been doing this for 28 years, and I know you had a comment, you want to go to the press and then I'll make this an American issue, that's fine, that's your doing. But we have somebody's word here and paperwork, basically testifying that he has done the report. He sent a letter yesterday or the day before, yesterday I believe it was, where he walked that site, he's been in there again, he's walked the railroad track site and everywhere else, and there is no sign of any vegetation or signs of it being considered as a wetland.
Okay, I have one more comment to make, and then you can carry on to the rest of the questions.
Okay.
My concern is that in-site development has hired BME as their project engineer to comment this project, and I believe that it is a conflict of interest that they are also doing this wetland study. I have asked the town before, and I really believe that another engineering firm should go out to do a second study, because we truly believe that the three wetland indicators are present on site, which is why we are pushing for this.
I see what you're saying, but on the other side of the coin, I guess I have to ask you a question. Are you insinuating that you do not trust this gentleman who's been in this and would miss his engineering license for a seven-lot subdivision? Is that what you're telling me?
Based on my experience, unfortunately, with this whole process from March, starting with soil requests and conversations, which started out just as me trying to get information, the way that things seem to have been withheld and dismissed does not make me trust anyone involved in this situation, unfortunately, so my sole answer is, no, I don't, I don't trust this. And I know you have to get to other comments, so I will-
No, that's okay, it's just, you know, I feel bad that you're taking the abstinence, I mean, it's, the town has gone backwards to answer and deal with questions and so on and so forth with these extreme conditions.
Well, I don't really think that's fair, because the residents have gone, it's a great place to do research, to talk with the regulators, to-
Well, I got a lot of the-
-to talk with our neighbors.
Nicole, I got a lot of the research, I got a lot of the research that they came back with, and then I go and review it again, and find it alive, it isn't true.
No, I haven't, because no one will hear that.
It's misconceptions, a lot of it. Half of the stuff is all misconceptions, they're not factual things you guys are coming up with.
I get this guy that's from the Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I will let other people comment, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot, Nicole. Okay, anybody else wishes to call in, I guess, feel free to call. And again, it's 872-7011. I don't know what more we can do, I mean, you've done it, you've been over there several times.
This request is first within the last 28 years, it never happens, very unusual.
No, I mean, I'm comfortable with it. Personally, I'm, you guys, I'm assuming are comfortable with what his results were, with all the information that came back. All right, again, this is a public hearing, and one more time, the phone line is open, 872-7011, if anyone else wishes to comment on this. Hello, good evening, go ahead.
Josh, hi, this is April Schwender-Bennett calling.
Hi, April.
I'm at 941 Plum Road. The sketch that is, the sketch first indicates that half an acre lot was sold in March. So now they're working with a smaller parcel of development, have they taken that into consideration in the lot?
Yes, April, actually, that, good point, it's a good question. That piece was actually part of the overall initial development, the size of it, while that was still intact with the, what exists. Then that was sold off as a separate lot, so that, it did meet the requirements, yes.
Okay, and I have to go with Nicole, I honestly think this independent study with the wetlands, unfortunately, it's definitely a conflict of interest.
Well, there's another alternative, if folks wanted to get together, I guess, and hire an engineer and go do a survey, I mean, I'm sure that's a feasible thing to do, but the town, I mean, I believe our board, and based on the information and based on who presented it and who did the study, I think that we are comfortable with what has been presented to us.
Okay, well, unfortunately, that's not, I mean, I know that he may be good, but he's working with the company that actually is hiring him to build the site, so I just don't feel that there's, I mean, he can persuade one way or the other.
So I would ask you the same question, I just ask, would you, would you, would you feel the gentleman would risk his license and engineering degree and everything else when he is rated as one of the top guys in the state for delineating wetlands?
Possibly, it depends on how much he's getting paid, if I'd be a person in the company.
Well, I don't think you could pay a person, come on, let's get real, I don't think you could pay a guy that much money to sacrifice his livelihood. Anything else, Mary?
Well, I feel that an independent study needs to be done before the filter.
Okay, and again, like I said before, you know, at this point in the game, in my opinion, I think, and if the neighbors are, there's enough neighbors and you want to have somebody do it, go ahead and have somebody do it, we can't just keep burdening, this thing has gone at, seven lots, it isn't a major subdivision, so cost-wise, not a big question, so.
My other question is, if this does go through, are they able to put the driveway in the middle?
If this goes through, no, because that, that concept, we looked at, and that was under a standard, see, that was a standard development to show what could go there, with no open space, no protecting trees, no anything.
Now, my question is, they do it that way?
So they want a cluster development, okay, so they want a cluster, so clustering, laid out the same, you know, with the road to one side and the houses on the other side, and that way they're in line, and then it allows for the drainage to be in the back detention area, which falls under a homeowners association for maintenance and so, so forth, and it just makes a better subdivision. And actually, that puts the houses, I believe you said, 500 feet?
Yes.
500 feet away from the current residences.
Okay, I wouldn't have a problem with the house backed up there, I have a problem with the driveway backed up there.
Well, how would you want to-
If they were to do it like the house where it looks like a conventional system, or like a conventional subdivision, I would rather have them do it that way if we had an option, rather than having the road go right up against our property.
I see what you're saying, but then what happens, here's the benefit for the houses to the north of that. In that area, April, you're, I guess you are one of those houses that back up to that, am I correct here?
Yes, Jared Bennett's owner, it's my husband, yes.
Okay, okay, so what will ultimately happen, between the road and your yard, there's, I believe it's 15 feet of space in there, if I'm not mistaken, and in there will be a swell going down, it'll be a landscape swell going down, and that will drain water. That will actually benefit you folks to the north, as far as water in your backyards, because there have been people who said, "We have water in our yards," this will benefit you.
Right, and I'm one of those people that has major water in my backyard, I would rather see the house, I don't care about the water in my backyard, I can take care of it on my own. What I'm concerned of is looking at a road behind my house.
Okay.
What I would prefer, the house behind my house, if we're going to do this, if we can get this done, with the house behind my house, there will still be trees set up in the backyard and stuff like that, they're not going to, they're not going to completely clear the whole thing for a house lot, they're going to leave a little bit of trees in the backyard, whereas with the road going back there, it's going to strip it right down to the swell, and leave that little bit of landscaping for the swell, but they're going, if they have a house back there, they're going to have some trees, obviously people want trees in their backyard. Can you see what I'm saying?
No, I understand, I understand, and, see, that's, I mean, that's your opinion on something, and I'm not saying right or wrong, but that's an opinion, which is-
Well, that was, I mean, that's what, that's, that's much better than, if you looked at that plan, it was much better than the road running right up against our backyard, because trust me, nobody wants to see me out of my back window, half naked, or completely naked.
What time is it?
Guarantee that. And that's what they're going to see, if there's a road with no trees up there.
Okay, I appreciate your call, April.
Okay.
Again, that's going to be a decision the board makes here and now, based on what's presented, but, you know, our goal was based on some of the other information about drainage in the yards and so on and so forth, and that's how it was designed, see, but you've got an alternative, I'm not saying right or wrong, but- I'm not saying right or wrong, but you have an alternative view on it, you know, and that's, that's okay too. All right, honey, what am I saying? Okay, thanks, April.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Why do I say that? All right. Two calls, there were two, these two ladies had given us, we all got copies of letters from them and so on. All right, is, if there is anyone else before we close this off wishing to speak before we close the public hearing? Eight seven two seven zero one one. Meanwhile, back here.
I have a quick question, that ought to beat a dead horse. But if we're putting a swell in along this road, is there any concerns about the creek with all the water from the backyards going into that directly?
Is there, I'm sorry, I hear you.
The swell along the road and that drainage of all these backyards into that creek directly, is there any concerns with that?
Martin, hold on one second, okay, you'll get this. Good evening, go ahead.
I know.
Hi. Hello?
Hello, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, hi, the line is confusing. I just want to talk facts with you.
Talk what?
The, I just want to talk facts with you. No, that's good. Okay, the street on the plans that were available for the public to look at, it says it's twenty feet long now just the evening.
Hold on a second, why don't you give us your name so we've got it for the record, okay?
Okay, Cynthia Barge.
Cynthia, okay, Cynthia Barge, okay. Yes, we do.
Okay, so. Yeah, the plans show the road has increased from previous plans that said fifteen feet to twenty feet on the plans. And now tonight the builder has said a twenty-six foot road. Okay, so that's not on any plan, so if you approve anything tonight, that's not in writing anywhere. So I just want to point that out.
Okay, just clarify that while you're right there. The plans we have tonight are the updated, they're the things that were requested from the last time they given us this evening. They show the twenty-five, twenty-five or twenty-six foot wide road. That request is a result of the fire marshal has requested that be enlarged to that size. And their concern is if there were two trucks, a fire truck and ambulance, what have you, trying to pass on that road, they want to have adequate space to allow for the traffic to, you know, pass through there. So that was the reason.
That seems like a good idea.
Yes.
Okay, but if the public, I mean, I was looking at this this afternoon. I didn't see twenty-six feet on any plan that I looked at. So that seems unfair for the public to respond to something you've seen and we haven't, it hasn't been made available to us.
I can't honestly tell you what, what was online as far as the size, what was, what was put on there, it may have been a previous drawing, but I would have to guess it was the same drawing, right?
Well, it says twenty feet, so that's why there's a discrepancy. If you approve what the builder says, it's not what's on the plan that I was able to look at today.
I got you, I got you. Here's another way we've got to look at this, you know, this is something we're doing new now by trying to communicate with everybody and keep everybody updated. I am wondering if we're making a mistake by even putting this stuff online. We didn't have these issues before because the final drawings, the drawings are at the town hall. Somebody wants, they're more than welcome to come up and see them. Now, putting them online, if there's changes done during the process of fine tuning a drawing, if you will, then that drawing is bound to be modified some like this evening. And, you know, you can't put it out five minutes before, so, you know, it's basically a courtesy at this point of communication. We're doing it best to try and make this, to make it, you know, so people can see it and nothing is hundred percent, you know?
Well, as citizens and as you guys being elected and appointed people, I think that you have the responsibility to uphold the code. You know, so we're dealing with, you know, legal items here. It's not just opinions and attitudes and things. So like I said, I wanted to stick to facts. I have R3 documents and I have never seen a traditional zoning set up for this lot. And that is why there are still too many buildings on this lot. It does not comply with R3 zoning according to section two twenty-five. And I just want to read the end of cluster development, so.
Don't, don't, don't read it, we know what it is, we already have read it.
Well, I don't know that you do because you have ignored it.
Yes, we have, and we've seen it and we understand it. The attorneys, the engineers, everybody has reviewed this. You're seeing it now and coming up with an interpretation that suits you. It does not the requirements. And yes, there was a drawing, let me finish, there was a drawing showing originally nine houses, including the original old house. That was dropped out. Now, that's how many fit conventionally. That drawing was, was shown to the board, that was shown early on and in subsequent meetings also. So at this point now, they've come in with, you know, what they're proposing under the cluster code and it does meet the requirements. These lots are actually bigger than the ones that are there, the current houses.
I submit to you that it has never met the requirements for R3 zoning. For one thing, R3 zoning requires sixty foot streets. So there was never a sixty foot street put into this. And it's not just my opinion, it's in the code. And so they couldn't fit a sixty foot street and seven houses in that space in a traditional conventional code as required by the town code of Webster.
Don't go too fast for me, you're listening to me. The code calls for dedicated roads to be sixty feet. That could have been a private drive of the same size of twenty-five, twenty-six feet. It didn't have to be a dedicated road, it didn't have to be a dedicated road. That could have been a private drive as currently is proposed.
No, the maximum committed number of dwelling units of building lots shall be determined by dividing the land area of the subject property by the normal minimum required lot area for the zoning district in which it lies. However, prior to determining the number of dwelling units of building lots, the parcel needs to be developed. Oh, that's not what I wanted to read, it's G that I wanted to read. Anyway, they never complied with a traditional conventional plan in that space. They never did. And it's, so what you're about to approve, it doesn't meet code. It doesn't stand up to R3 zoning.
Well, okay, I, I can understand you have, you know, an opinion on it, but.
No, it's not an opinion and it's not an interpretation, it's in black and white in the code.
Tony, Tony, I don't know if she's gonna be able to hear me, but I'll, I'll talk to her.
Sure, go ahead.
This is the exact thing that I questioned a couple of months ago. And since then, we have received a drawing that showed a conventional layout. And that conventional layout shows, what, nine lots on it, I believe.
Yeah, that was it.
Shows eight lots on it. We have received that. That drawing is the maximum number that can go on the parcel. I went through your calculations when I was questioning this, doing all the subtractions of the areas that wouldn't count towards the cluster development and came up with.
It's very difficult for me to hear you.
Like, because I'm giving a poker. The questions that you have are the exact questions that I want. And the applicant has gone through all of the questions and addressed all of those sections in the code. They came up with the standard development, we have a copy of that plan. They came up with the calculations that were subtracting out the areas that you couldn't build on, which would be the area of the stream, the areas of steep slope, those items that are specifically enumerated in the code. They came up with those.
I wish I could hear what you're saying.
They divided it by the exact number that you have for the size of parcel for this development. And when it was done, it came up with the eight parcels that they have. So the submitted that they do have meets the code.
That it ever was. Some other facts I just want to say before I hang up is there is no such thing in the Webster town code as a homeowners association. There's also no such thing as a shared driveway, common driveway, shared road.
Okay, look under, look under the town code, look under the code.
You are doing a shared road, I have been in the town code.
No, no, look under definitions and I haven't, I don't know exactly where it is, but if you look under definitions for driveway.
No, it's not there.
Yes, it is, I'm sorry, it is.
No, it is not, it's not.
Okay, is there anything else you want to give us? I don't want to argue with you, I'm telling you it's there and I've seen it, I've read it and it is there. It mentions private drives and streets, yes. Okay, all right, anything else?
It doesn't talk about shared drives, it's very easy to search in the code and it doesn't say those words.
Look under definitions.
It only refers to streets, I have been in definitions.
My God, oh my.
I have spent so much time in this code. You look at the definition.
All right, is there anything else you wish to bring up?
Yep. Even in a trailer park in the town of Webster, the roads have to be twenty feet from the adjacent property. And that does not happen on the north side of this lot or the west side.
This is in a trailer park?
I know, but even in a trailer park, it would be at least twenty feet and this is less than. So you are approving something that should not be in R3 zoning.
Okay, is there anything else you wish to bring up?
No.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for calling in anyways, thanks a lot. Have a good evening, bye-bye.
Tony, I was on Webster's site and the road is twenty-five feet on the drawing that's on the site. It is there, the one that she said she couldn't find, it's on there.
Well, there were a lot of errors in what she was saying. If you look in the town code and you look just under the, you don't even have to go anywhere, just look under definitions. It talks about streets and roads, it's very explicit. And it names them, in a, in a private drive, private road, however they word it, is road that has more than one unit connected to another on it. I mean, what more can I say? All right, let's move on. Anything else? Mark, all right.
Hi, Tony. I can't see you, my glasses are all fogged up because of.
I do now. Derek, anything else, you see anything that, I think they've pretty much covered everything. I mean, I think the idea of the detention pond being under homeowners association, I think the homeowners association is a key thing in this whole project for maintenance of the site.
Was there a question about the name change?
About what?
The name change.
Of the street?
The subdivision.
Oh, the Waverly, you mean?
The Waverly.
Yeah, I, really, there's a Waverly Woods in Webster already, so I don't know what the deal is with that. Why don't you go up to the mic?
We didn't know that when we picked it, so, so there's no confusion for nine one one emergencies or even just the general public will, will refer back to Landon Woods. We liked that, that was our two choice. And we would just get that effect that this will be as it was originally named Landon Woods. And then there's no confusion for any emergency vehicles.
Okay. Good evening, hello?
Yes, this is April again, I have a question. If we were to decide to want to get an engineer to survey the site, would that be allowed?
If you wanted to have your own engineer?
Yes.
I would guess you'd have to do, it'd be to contact the developer and see if he'd give you a right to go.
Well, the developer's right there, so.
He's right here, but I don't know if that's our place to ask him if he wants somebody going onto a site.
And do you have a problem if we were to come and have a survey, or have an engineer check it out?
Would I have a prob, would this board have a problem?
This developer, this developer, he's right there.
Would he have a problem?
Does he have a problem with us getting an engineer on the site to just allow him?
We could turn it into a gambling deal here, we could set it up that if you don't find anything, you owe us money.
That's fine, I don't mind losing money, I need to find out.
I don't know. No? Yeah, that's what he's saying, that's, that would be my concern, yeah. See, the fear is the liability in a case like this. Somebody goes on there, engineer goes and tips and twists his ankles, oh my God, I got hurt there, now who's liable?
Okay, so that's not being very forthcoming, so that leads me to believe a little bit, I mean, if you're not gonna allow somebody to come and check this independent study, to make sure that there is no wetlands on there, it seems to me like you're hiding something.
Well, okay, why don't we do this? I'm sure, my guess is if you are willing to have an insurance policy to cover the engineer to go onto the property, to go look at it, they may go with that. I don't know.
Okay, I would be.
If you need to ask for something like that, I don't know.
I don't know if it's our place to broker. It's not our place to broker a conversation between somebody and a developer.
Really, that's, you know what I'd suggest you do, I'd suggest you contact, you contact the developer and work something with them, yeah, because we can, we're sitting in the middle here trying to negotiate a deal. That, that would be up to them.
Okay, so will you allow, will you allow us to do that or are you gonna decide tonight that everything's final?
Well, my guess, as far as we're concerned, we're satisfied, we're taking this gentleman's study very seriously, yes.
So now what happens if we decide to get on, find out if there is a study and it turns out that there is wetlands on there?
Well, I suppose, I suppose in a case like that, I suppose in a case like that, you could, you could fight that case then and say we were wrong and you were right and bring it to court. That's the only thing I can think of.
So you're talking about independent wetland study?
I know a lot, yeah, because we're totally satisfied with what we see.
Well, I don't, again, I feel this is a major conflict of interest. She's the one being paid by BME and then she's also doing a wetland study. I just, I'm not comfortable with this at all.
Okay, Nicole, we've gone, we've gone through this several times and I understand.
You've got, Nicole, this is April.
Oh, April, I'm sorry. I understand where you're going with it, but it's, it is what it is. And I think this board is, at this point, is pretty much satisfied with the results of the engineer's study.
Okay, I'm not satisfied.
Okay. Okay, have a good evening now.
All right, you too, goodbye.
Did you close the public hearing yet? I guess we can close it, I don't think that they're saying one is just calling back. All right, so what we're gonna do right now, we're gonna close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Turn this on. Sorry, the little red one, where is it, oh, right there. And move forward here on this. We've seen this, we've gone through it, anybody, any concerns, issues?
I'm just still wondering if there's a concern with the stream, with that amount of water flow. I'm sorry.
The stream?
The stream that's being fed by behind those houses all along that road. Instead of having that going into the detention pond, you said it's going directly into the stream? Is there a concern with the amount of flow going into that stream?
I can address that. All these properties to the north are extremely flat. They're like at half percent and they have depressions. That's why the water is sitting there, right? The water comes from north, from their houses to the south, but then it turns actually in eastern direction outside of our property line. Along our property line, there is a raised elevation, raised grade. It does not enter our site, it just continues flowing to that creek in that location anyway. And because it's. And because it's moving very slow, I don't see that concern. We will have larger portion of that channel, very flat. It will be a little bit steeper at the end. We perhaps can put some rock there or, you know, to slow it down.
Okay, that's fine.
But it's very, very slow movement, so.
Thank you. All right. Any other Dave, Jen, anybody? You guys are all okay with it?
Yep.
We've, we've gone through it several times. It's just really the fine, fine tuning of the end result. Um, you have to do a secret. Derek, you want to do a secret?
Not going to try to read him when I'm asking.
Was that, oh, no, no.
Um, motion for seeker, excuse me. Lieutenant Webster Planning Board, consider request by applicant in site land development incorporated for eight lot, single family subdivision, including the existing residence on an eight, or sorry, a 4.8 acre parcel located at 687 North Road. A parcel having SBL number 064.15-2-14. The planning board determined that the proposed action is an unlisted action under section 617 of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations. The planning board determined that the action is subject to a single agency review pursuant to part 62, 617.6B1 of Seeker, and it is the most appropriate agency for making the determination of significance. The planning board therefore designates a South Lead Agency for the proposed action. The planning board has given consideration of the criteria for determining significance as set forth in sections 617.7C1 of Seeker and has one, considered the information contained in the environmental assessment form dated February 10th, 2020. Number two, considered public comments directed to the planning board during concept review and the public hearings March, on March 3rd, 2020 and June 16th, 2020. Number three, completed part two of the environmental assessment form. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board hereby determines that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination of non-significance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board is authorized to take all actions reasonable and necessary to file a negative declaration and discharge the Town of Webster Planning Board's responsibility as lead agency for the section. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board, based on the information analysis above, the reference supporting documentation and discussions of the actions by the Town of Webster Planning Board as documented by the minutes for the, for this meeting and previous meetings, that the proposed action will not result in any significant environmental impacts. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board therefore makes a determination of non-significance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board, based on the above reasons, issues a negative declaration as evidence of its determination. Second.
Okay, we have a motion. I guess Mark, you're in.
Mark seconded.
Okay, Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Cosell.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Kishani.
Aye. If we move forward on this, we need to do a preliminary approval. And we're basing it on the information we have received. Anybody want to do a preliminary approval?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for preliminary approval for the Landon Woods.
Dave, take your mask. You can't hear it. It's mumbling.
For the Landon Woods, um, project. Subject to PRC comments, subject to letter of credit posted with the Town of Webster, applicable. Subject to Monroe County Water.
You gotta talk louder. I can't hear you here.
Still can't hear?
No, I can't hear you. You gotta be talking louder.
Hello? I can hear it out there.
It's very low.
Okay, uh, all approvals shall be constructed according to the specifications of the Town of Webster. All roadway construction to be in accordance with the specification and regulations set forth by the Town of Webster. All site work is to be in compliance with the standards of the Town of Webster. Comply with all requirements of any state, county, or town agency. Address drainage, signage, signage landscaping, buffering, burmey, snow storage. And approvals are subject to drawing number four, project number 2696.
Second. What, you might want to, well, the road is required. I think it's, you're showing it at 25, 26 foot, whatever it was. 26, okay, so that's okay. Um, you might want to put, the applicant has agreed to have a homeowners association.
Make the road 26 feet wide.
Formation of HOA.
And they're going to have a formation of a homeowners association.
And.
For maintaining the road.
Work with 911 relative to the name change, right? I'll put that too. Okay. A second.
Okay, Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Cosell.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Kishani.
Aye. All right, um, not much to be changed. We've got the drawings. They've completed everything that we've requested. Um, for a final approval, you want to make a final, Dave?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for final approval for Landon Woods. Subject to PRC committee comments, subject to parks and recreation fees, subject to preliminary approval conditions, subject to all applicable government fees, subject to Department of Public Works approvals. Significant construction shall occur within one year as deemed by the planning board to expire on June 15th.
16th.
20th. 16th.
Yep.
June 16th, uh, 2021.
21.
Conditions of the preliminary and final approval are depicted on the cover page of the final design plans. The engineer for the proposed project shall provide a letter of certification that all proposed work was completed as per planning board resolution or final approval before certificate of occupancy will be issued. A letter of credit to the town for the project shall include a fee for the engineer's final certification inspection of the site. All stormwater facilities will be constructed first. Uh, what are we doing with downspouts?
I don't, you, you, you putting downspouts or no? Positing downspouts on the gutters?
I think we, uh, you're leaving your house anymore. If the downspouts will be discharged to the back of the.
Okay.
Subject to the resolution of final approval minutes. Approvals are subject to drawing number four.
And that's it. Okay, you have a motion, leave a second. You got the number there, Dave?
It's drawing number four, project number 2696, dated February 20th, 20.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Cosell.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Kishani.
Aye. All right, I guess you're all set. Okay, have a good night now, Paul. Okay, Paul. Uh, yeah, we can re, we have to wait for the next one to come in, but go ahead.
Okay. Tony Tomato sign located at 2231 Empire Boulevard, applicant Vital Signs requesting sign approval for a 20 square foot sign, non-illuminated building mounted sign and a 24 square foot monument sign to reflect the new business name on a 2.08 acre parcel located in MC medium intensity commercial district under Dakota Town of Webster.
Tony, I got a question about this sign.
Sure.
Uh, remember a few years ago, somebody, a few years ago, somebody came in for a sign and it also had a separate logo with that sign. Now, again, this is probably, it's an inquisitive question. You've got the sign here and you've got the guy's face. Is that gentleman's face considered a separate sign?
All in the same.
Yeah, because that's the way that other ones.
The sign is from left to right, top to bottom. Whatever is in there, in my opinion, constitutes the sign. If it's something outside of it, that's an addition too.
I think the logo that I'm talking about was inside the sign and there was some discussion about that. But I can't remember and I, I just brought it up to, to see if I'm out of curiosity.
Actually, I think the only time we ever discussed that was when the, uh, the logo was separate from the original words on the building.
In regard like this sign we're doing right now? See, that's, that's all part of the setting. It's all inclusive. Now, if that face was outside, it's a separate piece, it'd have to be measured as a square foot. If it's within the parameters of that angle.
I think that's what we've considered to be the sign.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Josh Palmer, Vital Signs here at 764 Ridge Road. I'm not sure which one we're doing first here.
Tony Tomatoes.
Tony Tomatoes, okay. So, um, we're here trying to get the permit for Tony Tomatoes at 2231 Empire Boulevard. We have, um, two panels that we'd, we'd like to put into the existing lit cabinet, uh, by the road. And then one solid, non-illuminated panel for over the doors at the entrance to his restaurant.
So the monument sign would be the one where Shogun is in there now?
Yes, exactly. Exactly. So we have, that, that panel is, um, 24 square foot each panel for that roadside. And then we have, uh, 20 square foot on the building frontage, which is well within my, um, my allowable frontage for that.
Now, what's, what's, what's this going to be where the sign is going? Is that office or is he making a restaurant or?
He's, he's got a takeout restaurant. Uh, it's a takeout catering and prepared meals. Tony Simone is, uh, putting his little, he's been doing the food truck for years. So he's kind of moving it into a, I guess, brick and mortar for, for lack of a better term.
And that meets all his requirements, Josh, right?
Yes.
It's okay for that? Anybody have any issues with it or?
I have another question. Sorry. Um, we've been asking in the past that signs have, uh, numerical addresses on them, making them easier in case the first responders need to arrive or people just trying to find, uh, where the location is. I don't know. I noticed on here that there's no, uh, numerical si, uh, number as to the address. Is that possible to include that on there?
Oh, you're, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea. Yeah.
If we were going to do it, I'd hate to do it on his panel alone. He's sharing the space with other people. It'd be, I, I don't know if, I'm wondering if we could add something down the column of, of the side of that cabinet back towards the road would be a better idea for that. I, I don't know if it'd be fair to him to force it to be on his panel.
Where would you, where would you suggest?
Well, that, that cabinet's eight inches deep. So the side actually facing the road, you could run a, you could put a, uh, some, some, adhere some, some numbers to them stacked coming down.
Gotcha.
And that doesn't interfere with the, any of the brands of the.
Perpendicular to the road right there.
Yeah. But be, I think that's far enough back off the road, it'd still be very visible.
Yeah, that, I don't, you guys okay with that?
Yeah, we've done that before. Yeah. We've done that before.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah.
Fine.
So, so we can make the approval and then make it subject to, it doesn't, it can be, it can be Mike or whoever, you know, to, to, that has to do that. But that would be a requirement.
That's the one thing we, I, I got to find out. His is a separate structure. I don't know if his address is the same as the address for Bunsey's. I think Bunsey's is 2225, I want to say, something like that, or 2227. His structure is set back 2231. I don't know. They, they share the sign, but the plaza might be two addresses. I don't know how you.
So, so you know what? Maybe, maybe what we need to do, good point. Maybe what we need to do with that would be to put, put it on Tony's sign in the back, just on the building or something?
Okay.
Just for that particular building, that way it covers the building.
He's got enough window space. I could easily do one on one of those windows, large enough to.
It has, so it has an address.
Okay. Okay, we can do that.
Actually benefits him too, doing that, having a charger if somebody sees it.
Absolutely.
Where are we going to put these numbers?
I don't think we're going to do it on the sign anymore.
I think it should be on the sign.
Because of the building. Far enough off the street where you can read the numbers from the road.
We can hit that, the windows above those doors are pretty large. I think you can get a pretty large number in there.
We have been asking for numbers on the signs when they're in front of the building.
Trouble is, the sign is, the sign is a multi-sign.
Multi-addressed, because it covers multiple addresses.
I don't know how you, because there's another sign in there also, you know?
Tony Tomato should have his on, his sign on.
Yeah, under prepared meals or something. They can put the numbers under there.
So.
I know it's taking up room, but that's consistent with what we've been asking.
Put the address on the sign, on the monument sign in the front.
Yeah.
For Tony's building, for Tony's sign.
As opposed to putting it back on the building, put it, put it on the monument sign?
In my opinion, it should be on both. I mean, it's a nightmare to find things when you're driving by, but.
There's room on that if we have to do it.
You know, why don't you just put it on the sign, on the monument sign out there?
Okay, so we'll kind of move his graphic up and I'll put some.
Yeah, just move it or take out or whatever.
Yep. Easy enough.
That's why you're the expert.
We, we can take care of it.
You can, you'll find a spot to put the address.
Sure.
Yeah, that's, that's probably a good idea. Yeah.
It's consistent.
Very good.
Yeah, so put the address on there. Yeah. All right. Anybody, anything else? All right. Want to do a secret?
Town of Webster Planning Board, consider request by applicant Vital Signs for a 20 square foot sign, non-illuminating building mounted sign and one 24 square foot monument sign for Tony Tomatoes. 2.08 acre parcel have an SBL number 078.20-1-56.11 located at 2231 Empire Boulevard. Planning Board classifies the proposed action as a type two action under section 617.5C2 of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Cosell.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Kishani.
Okay, so I want to make a motion for, for the sign?
I'll make a motion.
There's actually two signs.
To approve the two signs located at 2231 Empire Boulevard. For a 20 square foot sign, non-illuminated building mounted sign and one 24 square foot monument sign to reflect a new business with num, with, uh, address numbers on it. The drawing that we have is dated 5/22/20 and it's a motion.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Cosell.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Kishani.
All right, what's, uh, have you got the next one too?
He does.
Yep.
Should I read it?
Sure.
Scott's Auto Fix It Sign located 780 Ridge Road, applicant Vital Signs seeking sign approval for a 148 square foot building mounted sign on 4.3 acre site located in a CEO commercial outdoor storage district under Dakota Town of Webster.
I think you said it all. Just a 48 square foot sign. We have 572 square foot of space, so we're within the 10%. That's the south facing wall in that little corner cove back there. He has very little exposure, um, from, from the road. Alls he had previously really was that window lettering kind of facing back west. It was, uh, it wasn't really visible till you got down there. That, um, so we're going to be removing all that window lettering and we'd like to put this sign up there. It's just a flat aluminum composite panel with some raised PVC lettering, uh, just to add some dimension to it. And that's about it.
Where is this, where is this location?
Uh, it's 780 Ridge, so it's Danny Ola's building, the back end of that.
And it's where, which.
EQ, where EQ is.
Yeah, EQ is there.
Right next to EQ.
Right near, right near your building.
Our old building. It's where we used to be in that building. We're next door now.
Behind the auto locators or something?
Auto locators is up front. Yep. So this is way in the back. This is.
Well, Danny's piece there.
Yep.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
You're just going to have the one sign? You're not. You're just gonna have the one sign? You're not going to?
We're gonna address the monument later. I think they're trying to figure out, sort out tenants. So the monument really has kind of been, there hasn't been a lot done with that out by the road.
Is this unilluminated?
No, nope.
Okay, alright.
Okay, I'll bring up the thing I brought up at the other application. Is it possible, if you do decide to go with the monument sign, to put an address up there so it's easier to find?
I have to remember. I thought there was one on that one, but I don't know. But right now, it's kind of, there's two temporary type signs in there right now. And what they're trying to do for the monument up front is sort out who all the tenants are and who's gonna get what space. So that hasn't been decided yet. So we're kind of looking, but yes, when we do that, we would definitely address.
Because the main building is 780, correct?
The building is 780.
And you have multiple tenants in there?
I believe they have a large 780 on the building. I can't.
You know what, I think you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Actually, you know what, what he's here for tonight is just that back end.
Yeah, there's nothing, we're not, that hasn't been sorted out yet, what's gonna happen up front.
Alright, everybody okay with this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Derek, go ahead.
Town of Webster Planning Board, consider request by applicant Vital Signs for a 48 square foot building-mounted sign on a 4.3 acre site having SBL number 079.17-1-13.11 located at 780 Ridge Road. The Planning Board classifies the proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617.5(c)(2) of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
I'll second.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Arena.
Hi.
Mr. Jardina.
Hi.
Mr. Mixel.
Hi.
Mr. Cosell.
Hi.
Mr. Malta.
Hi.
Mr. Kishani.
Hi.
Somebody wanna make a motion for it?
I'll make a motion to approve Scott's Auto Fix It Sign located 780 Ridge Road by applicant Vital Signs is seeking approval for a 148 square foot building-mounted sign on a 4.3 acre site in a CO outdoor storage district with the drawing that is dated 5/28/20 for Scott's Auto Fix It as applied for.
Second.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Derek.
Okay, Mr. Arena.
Hi.
Mr. Mixel.
Hi.
Mr. Jardina.
Hi.
Mr. Cosell.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Malta.
Hi.
Mr. Kishani.
Hi.
Hey, you're all set.
Thank you, guys. Have a good one.
Okay.
Want me to wait till they come in or?
Yeah, you can go ahead and read it out.
Evans Bank signage, applicant Uric Sign Company seeking sign approval for, to replace two building-monumented signs associated freestanding plaza directory signs to reflect the name change from Fairport Savings Bank to Evans Bank on a 1.59 acre site located in an MC medium intensity commercial district under the code of Town of Webster.
Evening.
Good evening. I'm Chris McGee with Evans Bank Company. I'm here on the campus. I would say I will request the existing approval to replace existing Fairport Savings Bank signs to the Evans Bank signs. Same locations in the front as well as the back. The proposed signs are smaller than those shown here. The bug sign being 62.5 square feet approximately or existing 71.
And then the sign on the rear elevation, again, same type of sign. The existing is 43 and the current is 64. So, very similar in style and placement. That's basically it.
So basically, the whole thing is just replacing the signs with new signs?
That's right.
They're all the same size and everything?
They're smaller.
Smaller? So the facade behind there has to be?
It's smaller just because of the, it says Evans Bank instead of Fairport Savings Bank. It's just fewer letters and we're working in the same footprint. So it just ends up, the signs are a little bit smaller.
But you're gonna clean up the facade before the signs go up?
Oh, yeah. Any, we'll take the existing signs down. Any patching and painting that needs to be done will be done prior to the installation of the two new signs.
Okay. Just replacing the signs actually with the new Evans Bank.
Is the white in the sign illuminated?
It is not illuminated. And actually, it probably will not end up being white. We want to, the bank wants it painted to match the background. So it blends in so that just the letters are more prevalent. So the background is not illuminate.
Is the background, is the background brown or blue? According to what I see here, it's.
No, it's gonna, it's gonna match the background.
A tan, that's tan background, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
It's another case where it'd be good to have the, you know, address and the thing, but there's, this isn't their doing. They're just a small unit in the overall, you know?
That's correct. Is the address on the monument sign, Tony?
No, that's what I'm looking at. It's not. But they're, they're just one little sign among all the others.
The bank only has a tiny little panel in the upper corner of the existing sign. But yeah, I was listening to the other hearings and I was checking the ground sign. We did not make that originally. But it's certainly something we can recommend to the property manager that the board would encourage them to add an address number.
If you could do that, that's best we could do.
Yeah. Should be fairly simple to do that.
Okay. Alright, anybody, any concerns, issues?
Nothing.
Derek?
Town of Webster Planning Board, consider request by applicant Uric Signs Incorporated to replace two building-mounted signs and associated freestanding plaza directory sign to reflect the name change from Fairport Savings Bank to Evans Bank on a 1.58 acre parcel having SBL number 079.16-1-24.22 located at 1075 Ridge Road. The Planning Board classifies a proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617.5(c)(2) of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion in a second.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Jardina.
Hi.
Mr. Mixel.
Hi.
Mr. Cosell.
Hi.
Mr. Malta.
Hi.
Mr. Arena.
Hi.
Mr. Kishani.
Okay, motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the Evans Bank signage, what's the address? Don't have the address on here.
It's 1075.
1075 Ridge Road for two building-mounted signs and the, you're also gonna make a recommendation that they put the street numbers on the sign and the drawing number by the, is, yeah.
He's gonna recommend to the owners. They're not putting it out, so he can't put the address.
Yeah. There we go. Is there a drawing number on here? Well, they as presented here.
Put the date on it, the date that was.
Revision 5/13?
Yeah, revision date 5/13/20.
Yeah, revision date 5/13/2020.
I'll second.
Hey, Mr. Cosell.
Hi.
Mr. Mixel.
Hi.
Mr. Jardina.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Malta.
Hi.
Mr. Arena.
Hi.
Mr. Kishani.
Hi.
One question, if I could please. The ATMs, are those gonna be new signs as well?
It's a biographical. The ATM doesn't light, but the new, there will be new graphics to, to, I think I have a picture. To just remove the Fairport Savings Bank graphics.
Okay, so it's technically a sign then, right?
Well, it looks like that. It's kind of green now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, few of them.
Right, okay.
Okay, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next.
Adam Moore.
Applicant located at 492 Drum Road, applicant 42 Joseph Circle LLC is requesting sketch plan review to subdivide an existing 18.2 acre parcel into five lots located in an LL large lot, single-family residential district under the code of Town of Webster.
It's a good point though, is putting, we gotta remember that, putting the numbers on those monument signs, you know, because, gosh, I mean, when you're driving down the road sometime looking, not just here, but other towns too. You go right by, we gotta start remembering to do it. And these guys are good with it, so, yeah.
You want me to say, should it come, when Josh gets it, should he tell him it's gotta have the address on it prior to?
Could do that, could do that, if it doesn't already have it, you know? I think it's a good idea. What do you guys think?
Right, I'm all for it. It's because sometimes if you don't know where you're going, if you're traveling city down Ridge Road and you're looking for a certain address, you don't see the numbers, you know, have to guess.
Did you bring snacks?
I surrender.
Alright, you want maps? We have maps.
Hey, Al, good evening. How are you? Five lots, they're all greater than zoning, three acres on septic. Septic, we've got perks seven minutes to nineteen minutes.
It's a. It's better than the sewer line.
It's perfect. It's very simple. Grading works, all works. We've got, we submitted the plans, so you have those. Because we were hoping we'd go preliminary final, so we've got preliminary final plans that we submitted. So, at this point, I don't have anything more to offer. It's all access to the road. We're good to go.
Yeah, again, I guess, we did request you just give us your sketch plan. Yeah, Josh did. The way it was. Anybody have any concerns? It's pretty straightforward. Turman Road, Pellet Road. They're three acres, large lot. They're all on septic systems.
They're all ground, all ground.
That's all, that's really nice sandy soil over there too.
Yeah, yeah. There's no minerals, there's no rock, there's no water.
Guess I'll tell you what, it has the clarification that it's acceptable to have the leach fields in the setback area.
Do you have, I'm sorry, do you have them in the setback area?
Yeah.
That's not a problem.
Just kind of graphically, one of them looks like it goes into the right of way too, but that could be just the way it's sketched. Clean that up.
Which one are you looking at? Two? Two A, two B?
Yeah, two B.
Yeah.
Slight encroachment, but.
Well, all leach lines would be having to conform to what the required setback would be from the county anyway, so.
Is the intent to preserve as much of the woodlands as, as part of subdivision? Is the intent to preserve as much of the woodland that Town of Webster?
We are.
Probably is all.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody, anything else?
No.
Pretty straightforward operation. Come back for preliminary files. It's been good seeing you. We're good to go. As far as I'm concerned, this doesn't get any better than this. There's no issues with this thing.
You're right about that. Thank you.
Actually.
Okay, Tony?
Yeah, you know what though, I'm thinking, would the drawings, use these for preliminary file without having to make new copies? You did it already?
Final, I think we did. So we're, all the plans are there, so we just need to be rescheduled.
Just keep these and.
We need to notify, do the neighborhood notification.
Yes.
We'll do that now.
Okay.
So that was good. Thank you, sir.
See you in a couple weeks.
Good night, Al.
Are all the heavy items delivered in tonight? Why? We thought you were bringing your beer. Go outside. Okay, Tony?
Okay, sure, alright. Calvary Robotics Temporary Outdoor Structure located 855 Publishers Parkway. Applicant Robert Pico is requiring, requesting temporary approval to construct a temporary outdoor structure consisting of metal I-beams for testing robotic equipment. 44.14 acre parcel located in OP Core Area North Office Park District.
Yes, sir.
Hello.
So you're proposing an outdoor project?
Yeah, just set we set up temporarily.
Why don't you give us your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Robert Pico, employee of Calvary Robotics, a few miles from here, Publishers Parkway in Five Mile. This will be a temporary steel structure standing about four feet tall, maybe 50 feet by 60 feet. Set up for a few months. We'd have a platform, we'd tug out during the day, we'd place some items on top of it. We'd move the items and tug the, tug the system back inside at the end of the day. And when we're done with it, late October, we take it down. Nothing permanent, nothing power, nothing chemical. We have something set up right now indoors, but we need to bring it outdoors for the variation in light and weather. Make sure we can deal with those environmental factors.
Okay. Anybody? Anything, some robotic thing or something you guys are working on or?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we build automation.
Yeah.
Robotics is a key part of some of the automation we build, including this one. But again, nothing would be left outside. We tug it during the day and we bring it back inside at night.
Temporary structure, anybody have any issues with it? You okay with it? Where's the air with it?
That's fine.
Derek, you agree with it?
Yep.
Even a permanent structure, I suppose you probably still should do a seeker though, right?
That'd be a seeker.
Yeah?
Town of Webster Planning Board, consider request by applicant Robert Pico for a temporary outdoor structure consisting of metal I-beams for testing robotic equipment. 44.14 acre parcel located at 855 Publishers Parkway. Planning Board classifies a proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617.5(c)(9) of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
I'll second.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Arena.
Hi.
Mr. Jardina.
Hi.
Mr. Mixel.
Hi.
Mr. Cosell.
Hi.
Mr. Malta.
Hi.
Mr. Kishani.
Okay, we need a motion for the temporary structure at Calvary Robotics, and I want a motion. I'd like a motion that we grant the approval for Calvary Robotics for temporary structure for their use. And it'll be for, we'll call it a year, okay?
Couple months, October. We're gonna set it up in late July, take it down early November.
Why don't we put down for six months this way to cover, just in case, okay? So for a period of six months, which would go to whenever that is, June to the end of the year. Call it December 31st, good? Okay? For use, temporary structure for use until December 31st, 2020.
That covers it.
I'll second.
Mr. Kishani.
Hi.
Mr. Arena.
Hi.
Mr. Malta.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Cosell.
Hi.
Mr. Mixel.
Hi.
Mr. Jardina.
Hi.
Okay, when are you gonna be starting this?
Well, again, when it goes now, but we're gonna start to set it up probably mid-July.
Any chance of sneaking over to see what it is?
Yeah, you can see it from Five Mile Road. Yeah, to the extent that we can.
You will be able to?
What's that?
You will be able to?
Yeah, it'll be able to, yeah. Put it in as discreet location as we can, not to draw attention, but it's good. Not necessarily set with them by path, but definitely from Five Mile.
Yeah, you got it kind of tucked in there.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Good luck with that.
Thank you. Thanks for your help, Tim.
Okay.
Alright. 766 Ridge Road Vestibule located at 766 Ridge Road, applicant Andrew Captain is requesting sketch plan review for the construction of an eight by 6.5 front vestibule and handicap access ramp for existing dental office on a .25 acre.
for existing dental office on a point-two-five acre parcel in the CO Commercial Outdoor Storage District under Towne Webster.
Andy, go ahead.
I'm, uh, Andrew Captain. How you guys doing, Tim?
Yeah, how are you?
Uh, so, I'm here tonight, uh, to propose, uh, the addition of a front foyer at seven-six-six Ridge Road in Webster. This is a dentist office. Uh, they're having difficulty with handicap access. So, we want to build a small foyer in the front of the building. Uh, this will allow maneuvering of, uh, wheelchair, uh, into the waiting room. And also, uh, we're gonna reconfigure the sidewalk so that there's a handicap ramp. Uh, so there's no step anywhere entering into the waiting room. So, right now, there's a front stoop on the buildings. It goes out almost six feet, it's about five feet. There's a roof that projects over that front stoop, that front. Uh, that roof over the front stoop is projecting about four feet. So, we want to come out six and a half feet and eight feet wide. So, it's just enough to get a set of double doors in there and, uh, create a foyer for entry for handicap access. So, the colors of the foyer would be the same colors as the rest of the building. Uh, we want to put a black standing seam metal roof on the front. Um, I have some pictures of the building with outlines of the proposed foyer, if you'd like to pass them around.
Can you pass them around, please? Now, what dentist is this, Andy?
Uh, it's, uh, Timothy Egger. Owns the building. It's Webster Family Dentistry.
Which one is it? I can't place the opposite.
Uh, it's right across from, uh, Hasleton's.
Across from where?
Hasleton's. Yeah, the Chevy dealership. It's Doyle.
Doyle?
No, Hasleton's.
Hasleton's.
It's across the street from Hasleton's. Is it Hasleton's?
No, Chevy is Doyle.
No, it's not across from Doyle. It's across from, uh, Hooligans. Like, like right across from Hooligans. What's the, uh...
That's Ford dealer.
There's a Ford dealer on the same side.
Oh, 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 Webster, Webster Ford. Henderson Ford.
They're on the same side as Henderson.
It's across from Vision Nissan. It's a house by the, okay, I know what you're talking. Vision Nissan or Vision Hyundai.
Tuxedo place right next to it.
You're just west of, uh, Five Mile Line.
Yeah, you, you're by the vital site that was just in here.
Right, right next door.
Got it, yeah, got it, okay. I know, I know the one you're talking about. All right, so the house is back how far?
All right, so, uh, the map, um, I don't really fully understand how they made this map, but, uh, the fronts of the new foyer would be sixty feet from the edge of the road. So, I know there's some easement areas in there. It's hard to really tell what, how wide the easement area is. But the front of the foyer would end up being sixty feet from the edge of the road.
The map, the survey map that you have, uh, where you, where you got, you wrote down edge of street.
Yes.
But actually, that's the center line of the road.
Well, that's why I don't understand this map, because we measured it. And it is sixty feet from where the front of that foyer would be to, to where the asphalt ends. So, they've got that drawn as the center line, so that's, that doesn't seem to be accurate. I did physically measure this myself.
I guess the only concern is it need a variance.
It does.
It will need a variance.
And it is scheduled to go before the...
Oh, you had that, oh, okay, all right. And then whatever that ends up to be, that's it. With the addition going on, I have an issue with that. I think that's good, that's a good idea, probably to do that, too. First, the handicap ramp, need to check into that. I have a neighbor who needed a handicap ramp and needed to get a variance because of the setback. And I looked under American Disabilities. Josh is familiar with it. Went through this with, with Jeff and Towne Webster and so on. Under ADA, uh, handicap ramps, any setbacks, any variances would be required for a structure. Under ADA, ADA supersedes town codes. So, there may not even need to be, and I don't know, that would be something we need to look into before you go to the ZBA. May not even need a variance for that. And if the shed, well, shed, I apologize, you know, your addition, how wide does it end?
Eight feet wide.
Eight feet, now, if you're still bad, I don't know what setback is right there. You may not even have to go to the ZBA, I don't know. Should probably check that. What do you think, Josh?
Yeah, if I remember correctly, I think it was a sixty-foot setback, but...
That's what's required there?
Yes.
Oh, then, okay, then you would have to...
And I didn't account for the ramp in, in the calculation.
Yeah.
It was just a physical addition.
So, the ramp would just be an alteration of the sidewalk?
Right.
We would just be raising it a little bit? So, essentially, it would be a sidewalk, but it would be...
Yeah, so if there were a variance, then would be just to the final, your addition?
Exactly, yes.
My opinion, I mean, attorney may come up with something else, but that's what I found, and that's what they went with in this particular case, a few weeks ago that I'm referring to.
Okay.
It was excluded from zoning.
All right. So, is that something Josh will answer, looking into that?
Yes, I'll double-check.
Oh, great, okay.
That'll save you a little, little extra discussion on setback.
All right, good. Thank you.
Okay.
Just because you've got this discrepancy, the way you measured in the field, to what the drawing says on here, are you gonna wind up needing a clarification of this site plan? Because like you said, you, you measured sixty feet to the edge of the road.
Yes.
But the way this is drawn, using the word "center line" and then "street line", whereas more likely, the street line was actually right away and the center line was edge of pavement.
Yeah. So, I drew a dash line, uh, about where the center line is according to, you know, to my measurements. So, I got a little S with an arrow next to center line, and I drew a dash line. That's the center line, approximately there.
So, what was, it looks like, what's, what am I looking at here? The dimension shows thirty-three feet.
Yeah, the way it's labeled, the, the center line, and then it has thirty-three feet to the street line.
The road is sixty-six?
And then what he's saying is he measured, he measured in the field sixty feet from the front of the, the existing foyer that's on the building. And that goes out to the edge of the pavement, which happens to correspond to the, the item that's labeled as center line on the front. What gets a little confusing is that because this is a black and white copy, the, kind of that freehand stuff that he put on here doesn't show up as things that he added to the drawing. But the little arrow that he is giving to the dash lines is where, his estimate is where the, the actual center line is on the road.
So, thirty-three feet is the side, side?
Because with the way this drawing actually is, you know, since the setback is from the right of way, not edge of pavement.
Yeah.
Then you would need not only a variance for that, but it's a pre-existing building that's within sixty feet from the edge of the right of way.
All right. Okay, well, I guess that, that's something you have to work out with engineering.
Okay.
Just make a determination where it is. I, I'd do that, obviously, before you go to the ZBA, you know, want to get into there and then get a table or something, you know?
If that's the case, then I wouldn't need the setback variance on it.
What's that?
If that is the case, then...
Right, right, that's, that's right, that's what I'm saying. It's better off you get it checked out now and make sure you're okay.
And just have a surveyor update the map for you.
Yeah, the ZBA might ask for that.
Yeah.
Oh, sure. They're gonna ask for... They want to know where the setback is.
Yes, sir.
All right, so you're saying you want me to get a updated survey on the property?
It's, it's gonna, I think it's gonna be it, because of the discrepancy that you found.
Okay.
You're probably better off doing that. If you're gonna go into the ZBA and then you look at it and say, well, where's this at and so on and so forth, then, you know, you may end up getting kicked back again, you know?
Right, right.
That isn't worth the wait for that.
Right, okay.
Get it done, then, then, uh... Can we approve this, Raj?
Not with the variance requested.
Make it subject to him getting, oh, you don't want to do that?
No.
All right, okay.
You, the reason is, the code requires, the code requires the planning board to approve everything to code. But if needs a variance, you can't approve it because you need the variance and that's not to code.
All right, okay. I was just thinking, something simple would be, but you're, you're right. All right, you have to do this, come back once you get your variance.
All right, so, I gotta come back and see you guys again after I get, uh, tape location updated.
Yeah, yeah, get your variance, you know, go to the ZBA.
Okay.
Josh, Josh will guide you with that. Get your variance and then come back in and be quick.
Okay.
Uh, next meeting is July twenty-first.
So, we're gonna table it to that?
Um, no, I'm not certain. There's an issue. I mean, I sent you guys a note at one point, because we were gonna have a whole lot of stuff coming in. But the Board of Assessment Review is using the room, so we wouldn't be able to use this, so that got knocked back out again. So, right now, I have no idea when the next meeting is. Whenever it is, you'll be notified ahead of time.
Okay.
All right, so we'll have to determine, I don't know if there's, if we can do it at the end of July?
The twenty-first.
The twenty-first?
Yes.
We'll do the twenty-first.
Derek? Yeah, table it till that date.
Yeah. If that's, that...
That's a date, sir.
There's nothing going on then, right?
In terms of, yeah, it's a regular...
Twenty-first is okay, okay, all right, then, all right.
Okay, till the twenty-first? Okay.
And if you do need the variance, um, you're tentatively on the agenda for the fourteenth of July, so that'll work out good.
Okay, all right.
But I'll reach out to you to confirm that.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay?
All right.
Josh, I thought the planning, I thought the zoning board didn't have a meeting on July fourteenth.
We scheduled a special one to catch up with some cases.
So, we have to put on a record that it's been tabled until...
Yeah, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to table the seven-six-six Ridge Road Vestibule until July twenty-first. So, I could...
Call it a favor.
All right. Anybody opposed? I guess.
Okay, Tony?
Yeah, sure.
All right, the country store extension of approvals located thirteen fifteen thirteen nineteen Lake Road. Applicant Evan Catholicon Costeridge Engineering requesting a one-year extension of a final site plan and subdivision approvals to raise the existing country store and residence, resident to construct a four-thousand-square-foot building that will house a restaurant, convenience store with a canopy, with canopy gas pumps. The building also contains three apartments above the restaurants and the store with, with the associated parking. The project area includes two parcels totaling one-point-three acres in an R-one single-family residential district under a code Towne Webster.
Okay, and this project has been in several times over several years. And we've given it one-year extensions, uh, prior to this, but I guess you're in again for it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what's the story? You know what the plan is? Is there any plan to get started on it soon, or?
Yeah, so, um, we're gonna be applying for our demo permit, uh, this month.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, the issue comes in, we were talking today, because the zoning board also put in stipulations of significant construction, you know? I'm having an issue with that, because if they review it prior to us and they put a stipulation in there, it could be three months ahead of us. And say, you know, it has to start by a certain date, but we don't get it until three months later, or whatever the date may be. Then, we put that stipulation in, where does that leave it? In other words, the stipulation for significant construction should be, in my opinion, to the planning board. Because that's the construction starting, that's what we deal with. The zoning board, the variance should be relative to when they start the project. I think something's gotta be changed. Josh and I had talked about this. It's kind of, you see what I'm saying, Raj?
Yeah, but, yeah, that's a good point. And that's something that I would have to address with, uh, Mr. Janus.
No question.
But, I mean, ideologically, your approvals are your approval, board approvals, and their approvals are their board. So, they're both independent, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But you bring up a good point. It, it doesn't make sense to have them staggered.
No, because, see, now, if we, if we give them, you know, significantly, we give them your...
Right.
Uh, extension added. I'm guessing, am I right, Josh, that the ZBA's approval is already expired?
Yes, unfortunately, they expired at the end of May. The applicant had made an attempt to extend those approvals, but we were not having board meetings due to COVID-nineteen at the time.
And the problem then is, if he doesn't have the approvals, we can't approve.
The extension.
Yeah, you have to, you have to go back and get the approvals.
You just gotta go back to the ZBA, then?
Correct.
And then come back here.
And the reason is, this board does not have authority to vary the code. So, whatever, if the code says ten feet, that's all we can approve is the ten feet. If you want to have eight feet, and you got approved for eight feet, and then the approval expired, we don't have the authority to say, go back to eight feet, because we're not the zoning board.
Understood.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, even if the plans are still as, as we talked about six months ago.
Correct. What Tony has said is, is very apropos, but our hands are tied. It's not as if we have discretion. We have no authority to approve something if not to code. It has to be to code. So, unless you vary the code and get approval for that from the zoning board, we can't say otherwise. This board can't say otherwise.
Okay.
Uh, you know what we'll have to do, I guess, tonight, is, we can give you the extension that you're requiring, requesting. But then, we'll have to find out from Charlie or something.
Yeah.
What the status is.
Was there anything in the Governor's Executive Order for public meetings that address situations like this?
Good point, I don't know.
Um, all statute of limitations under Executive Order two oh two-point-two-eight was extended to, I believe, June twentieth. I may be wrong on that, but it's, it's an Executive Order two oh two-point-two-eight. Statute of limitations are told.
Even though, uh...
Because there was, uh, I apologize, there was Executive Order two oh two-point-eight, which extended it to April twentieth, and then two oh two-point-two-eight extended it further. So, you, that's a very good point. You might get some relief in that. You should, um, review those executive orders to see if your approval was extended beyond the time limit that was imposed. It sounds like it may. But I, I can't give you any, unfortunately, I can't give you any legal advice, but you should check into that. But Derek brings up a very good point.
I've actually driven by this, I mean, I don't live anywhere near it, but I've driven by it a couple times in the last weeks. Has something changed on this building, like, are the gas pumps gone?
Yeah, the gas pumps are gone, yeah. They were malfunctioning for my customers, so, um, instead of, you know, contributing to the headache, knowing that I'm gonna be ripping out the pumps and doing new ones, um, I thought it was best to just remove them, you know, so I didn't have to...
Is something different with the building itself, too?
No, I had just taken, uh, a tree down, give it a little more, you guys could see a little bit better. You know, I'm trying to open it up.
So, everything then, as the drawings were approved, is still the same?
Yes, sir.
You've got the property next door to the west?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
I guess pushing the envelope, since he took the, the pumps out and it's called for on the plans.
It's what, I'm sorry?
Since he took the pumps out, it's called for on the plans, as he actually started working. working.
Well, that's, that's, actually, you know what, sir? That's significant construction. Or destruction, or one of the others.
That's true. When he started doing work on it, the pumps are gone, right?
I think that's, you brought up a good point though. I think maybe that's something you need to look into is to see where your extension would have been with the zoning board, because you may still be okay, in which case we'll, we can approve it tonight, the extension, and if you still have that, then you're good to go.
Okay.
You don't have to go to the zoning board.
So I should, I should get somebody a call then, huh?
Who would know? I mean, oh, Charlie. Charlie should know, shouldn't he?
He would be the ultimate decision maker on that, I think.
Well, then that's maybe the one to contact.
I don't know if there's any, I'm gonna sneeze, if there's any confusion.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Then.
Okay, that's enough. One more. See, it worked.
You could, um, go back to the zoning board, not for the purposes of making a new application, but going in the, in the documentation that does the, um, that the governor's executive order told the statute of limitations for you, therefore you're not expired.
Understood.
That's what I think would be probably, that would be the most appropriate move because we can't comment on, this board can't comment on that, but they could. It's their order.
Understood. So what are the best steps to getting approved tonight then? Would be calling them, you're saying?
Well, as far as, as far as for, I think, I think our fellows here are okay with moving forward to giving to you. But then, I don't know what the status would be with the zoning board.
Okay.
That would be something separate from this board.
Something I'll look into on the side.
We can approve it. So, so let's assume like you, there's one of two ways this could roll. If, if your approvals expire.
I'll have to go back and.
Correct.
Yeah.
But we could still approve the extension.
Yeah.
Understood.
But if the approvals didn't expire, then you, you may not need to do anything with this anymore, but I think you need something saying that, so that, that's just my opinion.
Okay.
So that you're not spending money and resources without proper approval from the town.
Understood.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
I'm not advocating spending money if you don't have approval.
See, where is he gonna find this information out? I think would it be beneficial to get ahold of Charlie and, and? Well, he may know what the status is of that.
Yeah, um, not that I want to speak with Charlie, but if it were me, I would just say, you gotta go back to the zoning board. It's their, their order. They have to interpret their own order.
Yeah, I can't send them back there because they have to go there though.
Yeah, but who, it's their order. They have to tell you if it's still in effect or not. I mean, maybe go to Charlie Janassi first.
Even though I had previously applied for the extension?
Even if what?
Even though I had previously applied for the extension, like before the, before the expiration.
Before, before this COVID thing?
Yeah.
So, that's a good question and, and I, I, you know what, why don't you, why don't you do this? Why don't you call the town tomorrow and ask to speak to the town attorney? And then if he's not there, he can maybe return your call or contact you. I think that's the best and easiest way for you.
Okay.
You want to talk to Charles Janassi?
Charles Janassi.
That's, that's a real legal interpretation there. That's beyond us, you know?
Okay.
But I think you, from the facts you've iterated, you have a good case, because you applied the extension before the original approval expired and then the governor's executive order would have told it out. So I, I think you have some good facts to support your argument.
Okay, and then I'll, um, I'll give Charles a, a ring tomorrow and we'll go from there.
I think that's, I think that's the easiest, quickest way for you.
All right.
All right, so for tonight, we need to, uh, are we all okay with an extension?
Yeah.
Yeah. Make a motion. Somebody want to make a motion to extend via term?
I'll make a motion to extend the, um, date of, uh, significant construction for another year to expire, uh, what is it?
It'd have to be from the year of the day. I don't know what the date is of what we had. Do we have that, Josh? Do you know what it is? The date when this was, uh, you know, when significant construction was to commence by what date?
It expires tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow?
Yeah.
So it's a year from yesterday then. So we're giving them a year, so the fifteenth year of June two thousand twenty-one.
That's my motion.
Okay. Okay, good, nice.
Dave's second.
All right, you second. Somebody second?
I did.
Oh, they did? Oh, okay.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Gardena?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Kishani?
Aye.
Okay, so you're all good now with this part. So you have to deal with the zoning board and again, contact Mr. Janassi tomorrow and get his interpretation, his view on it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure enough. Okay, good luck.
Yep.
Have a good night. I guess that's everything this evening, right? So we'll close this evening and, uh, thanks for watching.